Seven o'clock. I'm gonna bring the board selection meeting to order. And this is Thursday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty. I'm gonna give a quick reference to public comment. And Leo's taping this for the public. And Linda Nickerson will post them, so. Thank you, Leo, for doing that. I'll open it up for public comment real quick.
I'm not gonna bother you guys from last night, but I was just unnoticed in Boston Public. Are you guys having any, any money at this point or not?
Uh, that was, um, that's actually, he's still living.
Oh, someone told me he passed away.
No, no, he's still splitting firewood.
Oh, wow. They're holding it too tight. Sorry. I'm sorry, Dan.
No, so, uh, so he's, he's still splitting firewood and doing great.
Yeah.
Mr. Blasgeron, so that's his picture up there. He didn't wanna come in and receive it, he's a little bit shy.
I know what happens though.
Yeah, so, so he does have that.
Okay, cool.
All right, I think everybody else here is on the agenda, so we're gonna open it up. And we're gonna bring it right up to Jeff Trexler for the Library Addict retrofit RFP. And Jeff has done the engineering on that. And we wanna put the request for pricing out. And we're going through that process. And Jeff has been a great help, uh, putting the information down that we're gonna need for the pricing. And also is gonna have a, um, site walk so that he can go over that job and the instruction. Because it may look more difficult than it actually is.
Usually bidders have questions, and it's an opportunity for every bidder who's interested to hear the questions and hear the answers.
Yeah.
And everybody else to see information.
And Jeff, what I was concerned with, um, we were looking through the paperwork that was sent. And, uh, and putting out the request for pricing. And then listening to the, um, municipal association of what we should have in there. We wanna make sure that the town is covered properly. But we also wanna make sure that we use the, um, correct paperwork that will also, um, won't scare off most of your contractors because it's too difficult for a small job.
Right.
And so, I'm gonna put some time into our morning work, and we're late to go through that. I think you've already done some items on your end. But what I'd like to do is see if we can finish this review real quick with you. See if you want us to insert or take out any specific items.
Um, I think one of the items I mentioned was about liquidated damages. Liquidated damages clause is a clause where the contractor would have to pay some eighty dollars per day if he doesn't get the job done by a certain date.
Yeah.
And that date gets established in the contract. Usually liquidated damages clauses are put into contracts when there's some extenuating circumstances where you have to occupy the building on a certain date. Or, um, money runs out if you don't have it done by a certain date. And usually when you have a liquidated damages clause, you also have a bonus clause to be fair to the contractor. If he gets it done a few days early, he gets paid a bonus for getting it done well.
Right.
So, on this particular project, I don't think it's necessary. It's been a really long time since I've ever seen a liquidated damages clause in a contract.
Okay.
So, would you recommend on that, that document, instruction template, that I delete that entire package?
Correct.
That paragraph?
Yeah.
Okay.
Lee, do you have any questions with them in reference to AIA package versus this package?
Um, only that when I asked our town attorney to, um, if he had it. Because I'm familiar with what town attorneys do when they review on behalf of the town. I figured he might have some templates that they've already implemented. And they're currently using for, um, used in the cast that worked well for various families. So, that's where they sent, he sent us this construction, um, contract template. But obviously, there's going to be some information either from the AIA document that you might wanna insert into this. And/or just the language that's in our own three attachments that is enough information. But I'm not exactly sure where I, you want me to start with it.
And Jeff, did you get a copy of that AIA package?
Um, I got a copy of everything that you have.
Yeah.
And with the attorney's, uh, construction contract, I think would, would be okay. The thing about the AIA contracts, either the A one oh five or the A one oh one, um, those are fairly well-known throughout the industry. Contractors aren't afraid of them. If you have a, I wanna call it a non-standard, but kind of a unique contract like this from the attorney. Let me get us on pause. The AIA contracts have been developed over decades with input from both, from all parties. From architects, from the owners, from contractors, and lawyers. To be fair for everybody, um, they don't really benefit one side versus another. And they're kind of industry standard.
I mean, I looked at your, uh, your general requirements here with your contact information. It's a pretty, pretty substantial piece of paperwork to look at anyway before you get to that.
Right.
So, uh, I didn't see anything missing in there. Just, can I ask a question? Time, timeframe, um, when do you wanna put it out? I give it before May thirteenth, you wanna have everything in, correct?
Now, that's the, um, okay, so you're looking at the request for bid.
Correct.
Um, I thought in a date that I thought between what, where we are today and how much time I need to get it posted and I, I have a mail to known contractors. Went with May thirteenth on a Wednesday for a, um, is that the correct, must be received, yeah.
Yeah, May thirteenth.
For a deadline so that we can look at it on May fourteenth.
And I just wanna make sure, Jeff, that May sixteenth for the walkthrough, is you pencil that in for us?
Yes, I have. I think that's a good timeframe. On the, we call that a pre-bid conference.
Correct. On site.
Gives them a week after that to finalize their bid and pricing, that's a good time.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
And usually, you know, a lot of contractors don't even look at it until the pre-bid conference. And then you'll scramble that last week, put the bid together.
Got you.
It's not something that's gonna take a long time to do.
Okay, great. So, um, in looking through this, um, you think that a couple of weeks' time is enough to fit that?
Yeah.
Okay. And you had mentioned before that you may have a couple of companies that you'd like to send this package to anyway.
I've mentioned some to lean. Um, certainly wanna get it down to the construction summary.
Yeah.
A lot of contractors will be pulling a few of them for work.
Okay.
Um, this is, you know, in this particular environment, it's a, it's not a bad job. It's away from people.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of an unoccupied space.
It's closed now too, it'd be a perfect time to get it rolling if it stays closed.
Right, as opposed to doing in addition to an operating facility or something like that.
Right.
Now you have to worry about safety and that kind of thing.
You, uh, have you had a chance to look at, um, the subject matter in this request for bids? That Rain has highlighted and changed some of the wording?
Um, I don't know.
Some of it was just dates and some of it was just off a previous template.
Yeah, so I didn't really modify it a whole lot. You had pretty much done most of the work. I inserted just, um, the date when it would be due on page one. Page two, um, is the walk-through date. And this is on the request for bids. Page four, I made a little bit of changes to paragraph eight, awarded contract.
Okay.
Um, it, it mentions Dunbar School District warrant, contract by owner, or an article. But I didn't think that that was appropriate.
Right.
And then, um, I inserted the board of selectmen there. I just, you've been highlighted the AIA one oh one or one oh five. So, I think Dave, you and I are gonna work on that.
Yes.
Um, on the time schedule, construction shall commence. I made changes slightly there. Following the data of acceptance by the board of selectmen, I don't think it needs to be, you know, for any length of time. Uh, if you guys make the motion to accept it. Um, and only so that we have all the necessary signatures, insurance documents, and to the town satisfied. I hope that was probably more than enough. That's in the board of page. And then the B amount paragraph, contractors will demonstrate substantially completion, uh, substantial completion of the project based on the completion schedule provided from the commencement of the project. I didn't wanna put a date in there because if they can't start, they're hoping until May fifteenth or May thirtieth, then they're gonna start, and they give us a start. Then we can work with a, a schedule of when we hope to have it done. I'm sure that between both contractor and yourself, you could accept a, a contract period when they expect to have it done.
Yeah, I think once we meet with them and Jeff talks with them all, so we can get a hard day on what they're feeling they can do on it.
Is that last sentence really important time is of the essence of the performance of this contract? I just don't know what you said.
Yeah, generally, that, that shows up in the AIA contracts as well.
It's a, it's a boil plate.
It just means.
Boil plate?
Yeah, it, it means you can't take two years to do this.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
And a couple of things, if on the fourteenth, um, if you have a series of bids here and you elect to award the bid to a particular contractor, generally, we would have the contractor prepare the contractor. Unless we're using the attorney's contract, then you've got it. But if it's an AIA contract, they would fill in all the stuff and submit it for signatures.
Oh, okay, okay.
But at that meeting, you could issue a letter of intent, which, you know, give a letter to the contractor says, we intend to, to, you know, enter into a contract with you on this.
So, we don't have to get too in-depth with the AIA at this point? We'll let them fill it out, and if we see anything that needs to be changed, we can alter at that point.
Right, yeah.
Okay, that's helpful, Lee.
And then possibly use this contract template as our letter of intent or insert for that?
A letter of intent. It's, it's a, it's a progress. A couple of sentences.
Okay.
I can send you one, we use it over at the school.
Yeah.
Says what you need to say. And what that does is it allows him to go out and start lining up, um, his materials, people. If he's gotta get, you know, a steel guy, or he doesn't want stuff. He can get started without actually having to sign a contract.
Right.
He's sheeted for her.
Okay.
But they're gonna come in with numbers, the whole, they hit it, they price it.
Yeah.
So, if they work on that AIA section, and we can review that as a board, um, that's gonna save that subsequent meeting, and that would save Lain and I from a lot of previous, for prior to the bid.
Yeah, I do, I don't, I mean, I read through them both. The short form is actually longer than the other one. I don't know why. But, um, you know, both of them are fairly straightforward, boilerplate kind of things. I didn't see anything in there that I would recommend that you make a change on at this point. More of filling in the blanks.
Right.
When's your start date, when's your proposed end date? How much, what are the dollar amounts and, you know, insurance and stuff like that?
Can I, yeah, just ask you a question, Jeff?
Yeah.
So, you, you've provided us three really good documents. What is the structural information, general requirements? Request for bid, is this bid proposal duplicated as a request for bid? Or, in, in a different format? Or do I use all three for the contractors to use and refer to?
Okay, so we have instructions for bidders. Um, and then we have, um, a bid proposal form, which is a form that they submit their bid on.
Okay, that's what they're gonna put their bid on.
Right. And, um, and then we have the, uh.
Structural general requirements.
Yeah, the general.
Part of information.
Yeah.
Okay, so all three are definitely part of my.
Right, they're part of the contract documents.
Okay, beautiful.
Um, by the way, I do need to stamp my structural drawings and give them to you before we issue them.
Okay.
Right now, they still say preliminary now for construction.
Okay.
And then, once we get the request for bids in, and we open them, and we award the contract, then they can do the AIA.
Right.
I just wanna say, when it comes to what you're calling drawings and education, I wouldn't know why. It was educational for me, thank you. You did a thorough job, and I, I felt comfortable.
It's what we do.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we have much else to talk to unless you have something else, Jeff, you wanna bring up.
No.
I'll give you a couple of things that, um, we're looking at on that building. We've got the snow and ice sliding off that newer slate roof pretty well. And I'm sure that the, uh, the building department is watching it as they're working in here. And, uh, you know, they've put a request in that we cover the entryway. But as you know, they're looking at doing the stair system on that as part of the town home restoration. So, I'm kind of watching that. That's at the, uh, architect's hands, Dennis Myers, and he's doing a, um, he's already done a preliminary drawing of it. Now he's doing a secondary drawing that will make sure that they meet all of the access requirements and handicap requirements and fire and life safety requirements. And the distances between the doors and entryways and all that, so that they can make sure that that works.
Code compliant.
Code compliant, so we're gonna hold off and, uh, you know, we would put signage up there during the winter months stating, you know, watch out, be careful for it, but.
Is the existing, I would call it the doghouse, um, is, is that not come out far enough to protect people from?
It sounds like, uh, they're watching it come down very close to that because it's sliding at quite a speed on different types of storms. So, um, that existing doghouse probably doesn't cover all of that from up there.
So, we had a men's coffee in January, and I think it's, uh, by a matter of eight minutes.
Yeah.
People walking out, and it's, the ice slid right up the roof. And the thing is, it just missed by eight minutes a whole group of people.
And it's the, um, it's the ramp, right? Is that long ramp that's getting hit?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it might be falling right next to it at this point, but it's not far off from it, so.
There's some potential there for it.
There's some potential, so we're kinda keeping an eye on it. Trying to put the proper signs up, and hopefully that section of the building gets some work not too far in the future here.
Yeah, good.
Another thing we looked at is the front steps.
Yeah.
Um, and the connection between the steps.
Yeah.
It's crumbling.
Settling, yeah.
Settling, and parts are, are unsafe. We were looking at doing a grant because on a building like that, the grants that Margaret said she could help us try and submit, um, on that building have to be structural grants. In other words, the code compliance section of that building doesn't really, um, have to do with a grant unless that section of the building was falling down. Then we could add code compliant with it. But we have a very structural building there.
Yeah.
Um, but on the front steps, that is structural and part of the entryway. And actually, it could affect the wall that's underneath that front section of the building.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna try and work on getting some proposals maybe to demolish that and rebuild that section. Not for a grant this year because we're already pass, passing the period that we could get it done in May. Possibly for next year as a maintenance item to the front of the building.
Okay.
So.
If you need some sketches or something on that, let me know.
Okay.
I think we could lay out a plan that shows the profile of the current curves and so forth. We would certainly wanna put a foundation in. I don't know what's there for foundation now. A lot of the damages from settling.
Yeah.
You know, there's some.
So, my thought is, it might, it might even take two companies, maybe a demolition company to take that out properly.
And hold up those roofs while you do it.
Yeah, and then another company to rebuild it with a proper foundation.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see, even if it's a poured one, that maybe we do the top with a, a slate of grates or something to that effect.
Yeah. And then, um, depending upon what you wanna do up there, whether you wanna raise the grade, you could eliminate the railing.
Right.
Railing is a source of, you know, the, the steel starts to rust, it starts to fall, the concrete or it's detached.
I think that's all eliminated, Jeff.
Is it all gone now?
I think so.
Do you think?
So, it's a question whether.
Now, let's just say that I do remember what it was, I think a center rail or something, but.
I thought it was rail around the edge of the porch, so, yeah.
I don't see it there anymore, so.
It's all fallen apart.
So, if, if there's, and I don't know what the code states as far as what that vertical.
I know on residential homes, thirty inches.
Right.
So, I'm not sure on a commercial type building.
Right, because we're, we're gonna need to have a guard. And if, if you're above whatever that limit is, and you do need a guard, there's rules about, you know, you have to have a lot of rails, and you can't put a baby's head through it. I mean, it's, so, just raising the grade a little bit out there. We eliminate the railing issue.
I think that's what we've done so far. It's about eighteen inches.
So, so, um, I just spoke with Margaret last week, so we'll start working on that, but it's, it's a year away type thing. But she thinks that we have a real good chance of that grant. She's applied for grants of this building several times and been denied because it hasn't been a structural issue to follow through with the grant.
Yeah. So, this, I would call that, well, the structural and life safety issue because that is a, a means of egress.
Right.
For, for the building. And if the stairs are falling apart, we need to get out in a hurry, that's problematic.
And that's because the stairs have a brick backup. It's a sand struck brick.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's soaked in water.
Yeah.
And now you can see the face, you can see a lot of brick in the back now because all of the concrete's fallen away.
Parging is coming down.
So, you know, that's just gonna continue to.
So, it's, it's, you know, it's a, it's a process, but you have to start that process somewhere.
Sure.
That's where we are with the rest of the building, so. And getting that portion that you've done the engineering on would be, would be great.
Yeah, okay.
So, I appreciate all your help. I know it took a lot of work for you to do it.
It's okay, it's there.
Yeah, so, yeah. I wanna extend that from all of us. Will you have any more questions, Paul?
No, no, actually, I had marked, I had marked the same spot there, liquidated damages. And because it's not a big enough job, the railing, uh, if we were gonna go after someone, would have been the first guy that came in.
Yeah, and I'm familiar with, you know, as you said, if they get done early, you always give them some sort of incentive to get done early.
Right.
You don't really go that way either.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's only if you have, you know, we have to be in here by a certain date. And, and, and we'll, we'll have, um, some financial implications. If we're not done by a certain date, then you have liquidated damages, and you also walk through the bunks. With this particular project, um, if we, you know, follow the AIA contracts and so forth, the payment procedure is, they would issue us a, um, request for payment. Um, and, um, somebody here, Rain or myself, might be happy to do it, would go out and look to see what they're requesting payment for, if the work has been done and/or the materials are on site that they're wanting to pay for. And then, they would issue a certificate of payment, which is the authorization for the owner to go and send a check. So, we're always, uh, we're never paying again. And you only pay for work that's complete and materials that are actually on site.
I have one more, I have one more question for you, just.
Mike, do you have anything else on this agenda? No, this is good. I like that, because the thing is, I think the last time we paid three quarters of the cost.
The last time they paid him almost all of the money that was owed, other than for the purchase of the steel.
Right, yeah. And so, I.
We won't be doing it.
No?
I'm sorry.
One more thing is, uh, we're gonna be doing another meeting a little bit later tonight. And, um, part of it's on the request for needs seen within the town.
I'm sorry for?
On the needs seen in the town because of COVID nineteen.
Yes, okay.
And, you know, needy families and whatnot. I know that on the school program with the lunch program and stuff, have you guys seen any need over at the school? I've called in to Clem earlier tonight, but have not talked to him. I did talk, talk with Patty Sharon, police chief, fire chief. And right now, we've seen no real increase in the needs.
Okay. And, and so, we talked about it as a board at our board meeting in April. And I brought up the issue that, um, you know, about nine percent of our student population qualifies for free New Year's price lunch.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, I asked our superintendent, if, you know, do we have any mechanism to, to help support those families during this time? Of course, there's probably a lot more right now, we've lost, you know, jobs and so forth. And, um, Bo has their own food pantry, so they're able to take care of Bo kids or any kids who attend Bo's schools, so, are seventh through twelfth graders. But we didn't really have anything here in Dunbar. You know, we're not really, you know, we're not delivering lunches to people and stuff like that. So, I asked the question that, I think Clem brought to you, um, how are we doing? And, uh, the way we had left it was, Tom was, he was gonna check back in with you folks before our May meeting to see if our program, welfare program utilization has changed much.
The answer right now, from what I've gotten back, is not much change at this point. But of course, you know, Dunbar is fairly early in this whole process and stage, so it may increase.
Yeah.
But as we get closer to summer, it may drop back off because kids aren't traditionally in school in summer, so.
Right.
Right now, it doesn't look like it's at any peak. I just wanted to touch base with you because I couldn't get through to Clem.
Yeah.
On that subject.
Okay. And, and our thought was, my thought was, that, um, you know, the school does provide some support for needy families through that free New Year's price lunch, and we're not doing that now.
Right.
Um, and so that if we see a need here in town, I think the school board would be ready to consider writing a check to help our welfare department. I don't think we want to pay money directly to a nonprofit like a food bank or something like that. Because then you're focusing on one entity and not other entities. It would be something where we'd rather go through the town.
And just so you know, the church has a food bank, and we have done, we've re-changled some of our donations from the Salvation Army to the food bank at the church. They've also had a donation that was offered again this week by a resident. And, uh, we're gonna get some other talk tonight about that, so. If we see a need, we'll talk to you. And if you see one, definitely bring it up to us, and we'll try and make sure everybody's covered.
Even, even some of the school organizations, the Bull, National Honor Society, wanted to give five hundred dollars. Um, and so, the thing is, uh, this makes, the, uh, one in the church is non-denominational to also. So, it's not really religious.
Right.
Religious sponsored by not religious given.
Right.
Which is good.
Yep. We're aware, and we've got our ear to the ground, and we wanna work with you folks on that. If there's needs, the school community may be able to help with some of those needs.
Yeah, so certainly, as soon as you hear anything, come to us, and we'll.
Okay.
Try and make something work for the families.
Right.
Okay, I think that's.
One of the beauties is, at least the, the welfare department has a set of guidelines and the rules to follow where it's not haphazardly given.
Right.
And there are procedures to be followed, and privacy issues to be followed. And so, I, I think that, in fact, we've got a welfare director who's seasoned now. We, we, we should be golden if we have any needs to, or to arise.
Good. Is our general population aware that we have a welfare director? And if there's a need to come forward?
You know, I don't know if the general is. I know there are people who have reached out before we've helped them. Typically, they come up to town and ask, you know. And the thing is, assistance or whatever else, and then that's handled through the welfare director.
And the beauty of the welfare director, it's more, she acts as a clearinghouse too. Let's say someone comes in and they obviously have more plans that would qualify. But she'll put them in the right direction. There's many resources in this region, whether it be another food pantry conquered or whatever. There's ways to get another aid, like Salvation Army, for example. She's more of a clearinghouse for information than other organizations that can lend a hand to. So, I'll share that with you. She's not, I mean, we have Dunbar, but Dunbar is limited.
Right.
Is that we're kinda strict, we gotta follow guidelines. But sometimes when you fall between too much and too little.
Yeah.
And you still need the helping hand, she can put, she'll put the person in the right direction.
Good, good, okay.
Yeah, so I think, I think that's it. But I just wanna make sure if we see that need, we kind of address as quick as we can as a town, so.
Great.
I think there's some avenues we can get people into if we need them.
Great.
All right. Thank you for coming, Jeff, appreciate it.
You're there to settle these plans with family?
I will, yeah. The last time I ever had, actually, printed full-size drawings. In a long time. I issued everything, you know.
Allegedly, yeah.
Look them printed. Absolutely.
What do you say?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Well, you need us for the walkthrough, where you'll get a key from Lane, and you're all set?
Yeah, I'll, I'll stop in. Actually, she'll have a key.
You do?
We do, yeah. I'm online, you know, we'll see who shows up.
Okay.
I keep track of who's there. I get, you know, people signing in, so I get names and addresses. So, in case I have to go back to people about a question, I answer her question, I've got all their contact information.
Okay, sounds good. So, you're gonna have Lane get the list, and we'll send it to Construction Summary?
Well, actually, all the documents can get emailed directly to Construction Summary. They'll post them all.
Okay.
Nice. That's a service that, oh.
Absolutely.
And the thing is, should we, uh, should Lane also put up the known contractors who expressed a little bit of interest? Should we send them directly to?
Yes, send them right to them.
Lainey, you got that too?
Yeah, I will.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
More construction than that, no one would, basically, I sent it this, this, because we know.
Right.
They're interested.
Okay, right?
Yeah.
All right, to the bottom of the agenda list.
I'll keep this all on the file for you. I see him.
Yeah, ready.
I forgot my mask. I have one too. My weight made it.
Lainey, you're next on the agenda.
Well, here I am.
Perfect timing.
Okay, so, um, sometimes there's a moment when there's need and there's also opportunity at the same time. And if that happens, what makes?
Lainey, for the video, could you just state your name?
Lainey Woulet, I live on Mansion Road.
Okay.
Um, when that happens, when there's need and opportunity at the same time, it makes sense to try to commit.
Yeah.
So, um, when I was working as a social worker for the Bo schools, I, um, by the nature of that work, I became really aware of some families in need, sometimes desperate need. Um, and many of those families, um, could not access what the welfare department in Bo had to offer. They didn't qualify for the sorts of help that they could get through the kind of formal network. Um, but, um, there were some generous people in Bo who I got to know. Um, the Rotary Club was one of them, boy, they were amazing. And sometimes I could bring resources to people who needed them right at the moment they needed them. Um, and the purpose of doing that was, the kids' participation in school continued without a blip, despite the fact that family was, had their house burned out from under them, or homeless for other reasons, or, or, or. Horrible things happening at home, but kids at school every day. And hopefully, the tension at home isn't so big, so we can concentrate at school.
Yeah.
And so that, that, that kind of got me to know that, even in a community like Bo, that was pretty affluent, there were many families who were in need, in one way or another.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, um, I don't know as deep into the Dunbar community as I got to know it, fairly deep into Bo. But I do know that COVID-19 can be a huge stress for all sorts of families. Um, so, I also, so that's, that's the possible need. The opportunity is, um, you know, most people in town are gonna be getting an unexpected check right around now. In fact, we got ours yesterday. And, um, I think there may be a lot of families who are gonna really need that money. And I think there may be, um, maybe a lot of families who, it's nice, but they would have been pretty much okay without it. Um, I think, I think I'm probably in that category. So, um, so maybe, maybe this is a moment when there's an opportunity for people in town to be good neighbors to people in town who are good neighbors, but just in a moment of need. Um, so I'm starting to try to pull together a sense of how much need is there. And one of the people who will know about that is our director of welfare.
Yeah.
Um, so I came, I'm coming tonight for two reasons. I'm not sure I'm gonna do anything with this yet.
Yeah.
But if I do start to do something with it, I don't want you guys caught by surprise by that.
Yeah.
Um, if I do anything with this, it's gonna be completely informal. Um, so that the kinds of things, the kind of hoops that have to be gone through to use formal resources through welfare, or if the town is sanctioning an activity, that, that kind of sets up formalities. I want there to be oversight to this, if there's a fund developed and how the money is given off, but, um, but I want it to be less formal.
Now, Ray, just to, just to.
I'm getting away from myself. I've still gotta figure out the need.
Right, so I did some calling around today, I checked with, just to see the need in town. So I checked with John Wigan, which I've been doing for the last several weeks since this COVID-19 thing, to see if there's any emergency items or any need within. He's not seeing any rise in need or any actual need that he's got calls on. Checked with the police chief, the same thing, went with him. Lainey has filled me in with our welfare director. She's not really seeing an increase of need or any, any applicants that have stepped forward yet. Some may not know about it as well, so we're gonna try to make that a little bit more. And I checked with Patty Sharon, because we do donate to the food pantry. Kind of changed around some of our, some of our things, our payments within town. So we give as a town to the food pantry here, and I think we could increase that if there was a greater need. Patty said she has not seen any need rise. On Easter, she typically takes care of about six families in town, but she does that every year. And she had already prepared to do that before COVID-19 came along. She hasn't seen any increase in need, not to say we're not gonna get there, just we're, we're fairly early in this, because we haven't had that many cases.
Yeah.
In fact, John told me tonight that all the cases that we had within town are all now past the due date. So we have zero cases, knock on wood, in town. So everybody's been cleared, we have no new cases. That's right.
Cool.
So we have no new cases in town, and the, the ones that we did have are all passed.
Now, I, I also spoke to Dan and Patty. Um, and I got pretty much the same as what you just said.
Yeah.
Um, I think, I think the moment of need, though, is gonna happen for families beyond those families, where someone in the family ends up becoming ill.
Right.
Uh, I think the bigger impact is gonna be financial.
Well, and that's what I just asked, we just had Jeff Trexler in here. And I wasn't sure what the need was at school, because I came from a family of seven kids, and we used the school lunch program pretty heavily when I was going to school. And he said that they've calculated that out, there's about nine percent of the families use that lunch program at a reduced rate or free. And so I'm thinking those families are ones we could maybe start to reach out at. I don't know how to legally do that, so we should check into that. But I reached out to Clem Madden, which is the chair now, and he wasn't available, so Jeff just filled us in on that tonight.
It was my plan to talk to Owen, the principal, and see if he had some thoughts, and maybe, um, uh, Larry, who may also know some families. Um, I thought, I thought I would also talk to the director of welfare, and it would just be interesting for me to hear her observations. Um, but, um, really, I think the point in trying to pull this together that I'm at is assessing need. Um, and, um, you know, if there's not a big need, then there's not a big reason to do anything.
Right.
But I think, I think the need, just one more thought, I think the need, financial need, is gonna grow over time.
It will, we're early.
Well, you know, the difference between this, you know, this pandemic and any other time we've had a strain on, you know, whether it's employment or whatever, is the stimulus package, which created the SHARE program, where businesses are gonna be reimbursed for keeping people in full time, even though they're not working. So, I don't know if you noticed, because I, I have to watch the numbers, but unemployment dropped from 39,000 to 23 or 27,000. It's dropping because of the SHARE program, drawing those people out. Then you have the unemployment program, which I wish we had used for some of our employees in town, but, you know, it didn't go that way. But the unemployment program, you're collecting, it's usually 50, because the lower end's around 360. The maximum you get is 427. And, uh, but the, the average is 360, but I'll say that the people that are collecting on the low end, it's 57% of their wages. On top of that, they get $600 a week above that. So they're made whole, so I, what I'm saying is, some of that's kind of reducing that need a little bit.
Yeah.
Only because of it, and it's the first time you can collect unemployment. If you come down with COVID-19 and you're sick, and you can't go to work, you're covered under unemployment.
Yeah.
You get, you get paid with that $600. Now, that's good till July 31st. People haven't gotten their money yet, and that's because about two or three years ago, we invested $32 million from the REED Act money that was given to unemployment to upgrade their computers and the technology. So they're set up for one system right now, and now you have a conflicting system that's bringing in this federal money, and has to be programmed out through that whole system. So it's getting them used to it. So, you know, I can see that there may be some, especially when, you know, the people in school that are receiving lunches, that could or could not be a strain. Maybe if the families are employed and that additional revenue coming in, they're not looking for anything yet. But we don't know, you know, so monitoring it through the welfare is probably a way to get an idea. And through the school, to see if they hear anything.
All of these formal safety nets that we're talking about, unemployment and welfare and all that, um, you know, hopefully, they help the huge majority of people who need help. I mean, that's what they're set up for. Well, my experience is, there are always people who fall through the cracks.
I was addressing that earlier. One thing that Jeannie does, a welfare director, she's a clearinghouse for information and direction. And so we have some strict guidelines for welfare, for example, and they're gonna follow the guidelines in order to get the checks made to. However, if someone comes in and they fall through the crack, otherwise they make a little too much, but they still have a need, she'll direct them wherever, Salvation Army for grants, for food, the food pantry is the one thing. She's got regional areas she can direct them to. And she, as I said, just because we don't have any clients per se, she still can be a focal point to put people in the right direction.
Yeah, so when I was in Bo, I got to know the welfare director there really well. Um, and she had been in her position for a long time, so she knew the systems. And every now and then, we, we'd end up talking about someone who she had tried to help, but it didn't fit anywhere. And we would talk about it, because she knew that there are times when I had informal ways of bringing resources that she couldn't do. Because every one of those programs that you talked about have, have guidelines, and they've gotta be followed, or else the program loses its integrity, that makes sense. But guidelines means that you're either in or out, and there are some people who are out.
Yeah, I think that's what, that's why we and the board decided to support the local church. As I said earlier, it's, it's maybe sponsored by a religious organization, but it's really non-denominational. If you have a need, the church, the local church is gonna take care of any type of our residents.
But it's like our local food pantry, really, is their stock there for it. They know the people in need, they hear about it, and they try and help as best they can.
Patty told me that they just got, they just received a fairly large donation. Um, and that really put them in a spot where they feel like they've got, well, I'm saying this, I was gonna say that they have what they need, but then she also gave me a list of about eight items, and she said, we're kind of short on needs.
And one of them was.
Throw that there.
And then, and then again, I, I think that they're looking at possibly a second donation that we just heard about this week.
Yeah.
Um, another one to them, so, so I think that there is gonna be some people that are willing to help out there. My biggest thing is, we also have to look at the legal aspect, where somebody comes for welfare assistance, whether they meet the guidelines like Mike said or don't. How did you guys get around that welfare director talking with you as an ordinary person from the town about the subject?
When she, well, um, we wouldn't use names.
Yeah.
She would tell me a situation, and I'd say, oh, yeah, I think I could do something to help that. And then she'd talk to the person, say, well, maybe you should call for a need.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because that would work, but we're gonna make sure we stay within the legal guidelines, because we're going outside of the window.
Privacy is so important.
I'm a, I'm a social worker and a therapist, I get this part of it. Uh, but there are ways to talk about situations.
That's why you always come to us, huh? Therapy for us.
Yeah, I try to help. Um, there, there are ways to talk about situations where it's impossible for anyone to identify who you're talking about.
Yeah.
Um, it's just about the circumstances, not about the people. Yeah.
I just figured it's better to bring it up now than after the fact, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and staying ahead of this.
One of our beneficiaries is also, but then somebody showed me, and they help out those people who kind of like fall into the crack too. So that's another resource that we have in town.
But there's some resources, this town being part of the Concord Cooperative of that, there's a lot of resources from the Concord that were brought to our attention. We didn't really even know a select of them that were available to our town, but there is a big group that, you know, they provided like 20 turkeys to families in Dunbar last year, and were all free, complete baskets. And that was all done through Concord, with nothing to do with the town of Dunbar.
Yeah, 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 there's, there's a lot out there, and that's, that's still a good.
So if we see a need, you know, we'll make sure to address you, and if you hear of a need out there, talking to people, make sure to let us know.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm trying to figure out if there is enough need or enough anticipated need for, um, my thought was, that I would draw on the folks I know in town and ask them to draw on the folks they know in town. And ask people if I've got a sense that there's a need for this, to make donations, large or small, to this fund, um, a helping, Dunbar and Helping Neighbors Fund, whatever we call it. Um, and I would also wanna set up a board, so that it's not just coming all through me, but, I don't know, maybe some odd number, you know, five or three people, who review whatever, keep track of the money that comes in, review the requests, and, and keep track of the money that goes out. Um, I want it to be transparent and clear to everyone what we're doing. Um, but I also want it to be really quick on its feet, so that if something comes up, uh, somebody needs $50 to make their car payment, or they're gonna lose their car, where are they gonna find that money? That kind of thing.
Now, I'm not on the, the Facebook spectrum, but I know that Dunbar has a Facebook page or something. I think, you know, maybe a questionnaire out there about need on that space might not hurt. We're, we're in town, and a lot of people don't look us up, or might not try until they're in desperate need.
Yeah.
But maybe on that Facebook page or something, that might be helpful.
Can I just, I think, just, um, in the past, board members have accepted funds to be held in the treasurer, with the treasurer for certain activities, for example, the energy committee. They did donations, fundraising, money that somebody had given them.
We have somewhere that accept late night.
And so the money there, that is not a lot, but in order to keep it out of the town funds and not commingled, you guys made a motion to accept it and establish an account to be held with your treasurer, and then maybe managed through the welfare director at her discretion with support of, you know, a secondary person, so that we make sure that it's being released properly.
So the only thing Ray said is, he wanted to keep it independent of a town function, so that if there's a need out there, and it might be less than our, might not, might not meet the requirements we're already doing through welfare, it's something that he could still address needs.
So that's not terribly weird.
Nothing you said, I think it's worth, if we get to that point.
If we get to that point, you can still.
It's worth talking about. The thing I don't wanna do is set up extra work for somebody, and I also don't wanna set up a situation where there's a lot of, it, it gets more cumbersome to get at the funds. Um, but, but if it's possible, do, I mean, if you're.
Do you create a committee, neighbors, helping neighbors, um, committee? Like your energy committee, and all, I mean, John comes in, now it's quite a down sum, but initially, he would come in two, three times a year, either do the solar exhibits, and then collect the money, I would then transfer it to the treasurer to be deposited and held in her hands. So there's limited, there's really not a lot of, of extra, um.
Establishment.
Responsibilities, once it's established.
Yeah, okay.
And then it's just making sure the person that's in charge to manage and oversee has some kind of authority under a committee established or something.
Well, let me, uh, let me do some more digging and see, um, what I turn up for, how much need there is in town that's not being responded to by the resources that we have.
And I think that Facebook page may be a, something that we, we can't reach out to, but you can as a private citizen to see what the level of need is, because.
Take, take it with a grain of salt, though, Facebook can be challenging sometimes. But still, may I get the word out? Absolutely, I think it's another way of getting communication.
Can you put something on hot topics? I mean, is that something that's?
Let's keep it, let's keep it on the town, let's keep it, uh, more, more informed.
But your question about do people know that we have a welfare department? Well, we get the call, and, um, there is information on our website that, but, um, even just the, the question, do you know someone that is a family in need? I don't know if that's.
I think the welfare director might be a good person to draw into that conversation.
Yeah, why don't you have a conversation with Jeannie and see if it's something that we wanna put on? We have to be careful of the wording of it, because we don't wanna open up a huge amount of questions for you guys to answer on a daily basis, thinking that there's, you know, there's free money out there also.
And the thing is, once you get people coming in, oh, it's welfare money to be had, please fill my hand, and they'll, they'll be woefully disappointed, a sense that there were so many bureaucratic hoops to go through in order to get a welfare check cut to you.
You know, because they're gonna, on our stuff, they're gonna have to give us all their income information, all of their dependent information, all of their household information, and then it gets leveled down to what percentage they're gonna get, if they even meet all that criteria. So they're gonna have to give us a lot of information, where with you, if we keep it out of the town's hands, we'll not have to.
Exactly, sometimes it would be.
The only thing I see is that they're more informal, where we're, we have guidelines.
Yeah.
And you guys can look at a request, whether, we're less than maybe not fit into the guidelines. And with you, it might be something that, okay, we can take care of this, you know?
Yeah, I think Chris Romline of the Police Department is very fluent on the Facebook page with knowing what's going on in the town and adding things on there that are happening in the town, so he might be a good person to talk to about how to word something on that. He's done a lot, and he comes to us and tells us, you know, he puts the bike things on there when they're doing the bike repair, the bike day for the kids and all those other.
He's a different count, we're talking a completely different, there's a couple of counts out there.
Yeah, he is, he is one that's directed to the Police Department.
Yeah. Okay, so when I got a sense of whether I think there's enough need to move forward, I will let you know.
Okay. I can wait for your concern.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay. And everybody stay safe.
All right, thanks for your turn.
Okay, going right down the agenda here, moving on to old business, which would be the meeting minutes from our April 2nd meeting. Moving on to, um, old business, which would be the meeting minutes from our April second meeting. Um, do I have a motion from you guys?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of April seconds meeting. I believe there was one amendment.
Yeah.
So I'll say it's amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been, uh, motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion has passed, remains silent.
Just, uh, I think, uh, the appointment of the, uh, we had a discussion with the, uh, building department today. There was a little small error in the way they appointed. It's going to be readdressed the way they appointed the, uh, ex-official member of the, you know, plan zoning, the planning board, and the al, the first device, first is the alternate. That needs to be readdressed, that's gonna be readdressed, I think, uh, probably by next meeting.
And one that was supposed to have the paperwork ready, but it's not according, I guess.
It's not gonna be, it's not gonna stop any progress in town.
Okay, going down to new business now. Mike, we have a, uh...
I'll make a motion, if I'd be so kind.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion for RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five, dash, B, paragraph, sub-paragraph, Roman number three, sub-paragraph, B, to accept the donation from Capital Well Company, amount of three hundred and fifty dollars for a raise across town park.
Motion's been made.
For second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lee, you have it, Mike, yes?
I do.
Okay.
Okay, we have a second donation of unanticipated revenues for the cemetery signs.
Before you make that motion, can I just say that I put this on the agenda, because, um, prior to town meeting, the cemetery trustees had approached the board and said they have these old signs hanging around, and rather than tossing them out, was willing to organize a fundraising through ticket sales, and possibly, if they made any money, to be able to use that to, um, add, uh, additional funds to cemeteries for the projects that they've been working on. So we did receive nine hundred and seventy-five dollars cash, and I felt that to, um, accept it formally and go through the same process, you guys can decide, um, how to proceed with the expending of money.
Okay, so I think, let's make a motion first to accept the money, Mike, and, uh, I think in, in doing that, um, just say it's from the signs and to be used for the cremains garden. I don't think we should get specific to be just the concrete for the cremains gardens, only because...
Just, they may have something else.
Yeah, the dollar might not quite meet that.
I'll put that into one motion if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Okay, then, per RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five, dash, B, paragraph, Roman number B, three, B, to accept nine hundred and seventy-five dollars of unanticipated revenue from ticket sales from the old raffle of cemetery, old cemetery signs, and for this money to be, these proceeds to be used for the cremains garden.
That's just, okay, sir. Yeah, just cremains garden.
Cremains garden, yeah. Sir, good.
Okay, motion been made, seconded. Motion passes.
All in favor, yeah?
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda here is, uh, continuation from our previous meeting where the tax collector would like to offer property tax payments online through e-registration, um, into our development software. And that is gonna be through a check that is printed here at the office and not through credit cards, so the town would not get any additional expenses, and none of the accounts would have to be, um, leveraged for the town.
Yeah. Dave, can I talk about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this a, um, it's, Bob, what this is, is a printer set up in the tax collector's office. If someone can send their check electronically, it prints the check off, and it doesn't have anything to do with touching our town accounts.
Yeah, I went to jewelry about it.
Okay, and Pam was concerned that it'd be touching our accounts. There's no bearing on that. So it's more of an administrative tool to have, to aid the tax collector in collecting money. And, uh, I think it's a great idea. I think the minimal, the, the investment is minimal. Uh, we're talking about, uh, three hundred dollars for a software printer, three dollars, maybe six hundred dollars, and...
We have the printer that, it takes a laser jet printer.
Yeah.
Uh, the stock for the, for the five hundred rings, which has two checks per page, is about fifty dollars, and, um, the three hundred dollars is just the annual software.
That's probably the biggest expense. The question is, do we want to spend three hundred dollars to have a software expense? Do you figure how many households we have in town, are they gonna use this mailing? Who can you drop off a check? That's the dilemma we have. Do they drop off a check, just drive by, drop a check off through the window, mail it in, or do we have to print it off? It's a lot of money just to have software to print off checks for the few number of residents we have in town, for the number of residents we have in town. And that's, to me, it's moving us a step forward in technology.
Do you think three hundred's a lot?
For soft, for software that may be used by, how many? Let's say thirty residents use it. I'm, I'm guest made.
Well, I asked Linda how many e-regist she's been doing for the last three months, and I provided the statements with her. Did you see them?
Yeah.
So she gave me February, March, and April, and they, she, and she gets a dollar for every registration. So there is a little bit of revenue to the town, not a lot, but...
But you can simply...
There's a flag on the side there, ninety-five dollars worth of revenue.
It's not, it's not a lot, Dave, but...
Forty for another, and sixty cents for another.
Um, I, I'm in favor, especially during this time. I think that if people can pay online through a check, um, I think there's another way to pay. And we're gonna be looking for people having an easier way to pay to keep our revenue coming in there each time.
Thing is, I like to also identify this COVID virus expense.
You know, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of things that we're gonna change within the town during this COVID nineteen thing, that are gonna stay standard policy for us. Probably the way we do some of the transfer station stuff will stay with us. Maybe some of the roadside cleanup in the spring is gonna stay with us. And I think this is one step that may stay with us for many years to come after this point, where people get used to maybe paying their taxes by check online. I've used this service through several companies, um, paying gas bills, and, uh, it's worked out very well.
I'd say we go for it and embrace it. As we do, we identify it as COVID, so if there's any money down the road, we can prove it, maybe.
Okay.
So, uh, do we have consensus, uh? Bob, what do you think?
Yeah, I want to add something to that.
Okay.
That doesn't really, you might not think it makes sense. But they do have the envelopes, because I use, I've been using them for a long time. It's self-seal, rather than envelopes, that somebody made is readily licked, because, uh, I know they use a sponge sometimes. Sometimes they'll only have one or two to do them and do that. And I think going through that cleaner process of self-sealing envelopes, which I know aren't that much more money.
Well, actually, the ones that we print from the prison, uh, a box of a, I think it's a thousand, it's like almost a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars. It's, it's not that cheap.
Jeez, I go to, I go to, uh...
Just buy them from Staples?
I go to Staples. I, when I had my account when I was doing that work, I used to go to Staples and buy blocks of five hundred, and it wasn't that expensive.
But that's because we have a return, and they're stamped on the out, printed on the outside of the envelope.
Yeah, so that adds something. Um, but what, what uses the envelope?
Right, currently, right now, the town court's office mailing is using that method. This, the, uh, self-sealing, whereas the tax collector for her mailing, she still uses the swiping of the sponge. And our, I mean, every weekly, uh, mailings from the, uh, mine office are also just doing the sponge. Nobody licks it, but there is a little more inlay with them.
So you're using a sponge instead?
Yeah, but you know, sometimes you only have a couple, and it's, I don't know.
I, I, I think we, I, I don't mind. I think that's probably a prudent idea, just for safety, just to bring, uh...
I don't have any issue with it one way or the other.
No.
I mean, we could save and provide generic envelopes and then just stamp the return on it, but is that...
I think that'd look a little hokey. This is a town tax bill, so I don't really want to start looking hokey, but, you know? And stamp, you know, some are gonna be lighter, some are darker. I'd rather get printed ones, if we, if we do do it.
I, I support that. I, I don't think it's a major expense. It's administrative expense.
I'll tell you what, why don't we, why don't we check with the department, and if they see, if there's a need for that, then we'll go ahead and do that with the...
Okay, so, okay.
Well, if you guys decide you guys need something, if Judy would rather do that, and she feels better going that way for this period of time, I think I'm fine with that.
Yeah. I'd kind of like to just make, give the...
So, Lee, is this looking for, uh, my signature on this?
It does need more signatures, yes.
Okay.
I'd like to, just let that decision be pushed down to the ministry event for the, for the envelopes.
Maybe with a larger volume, we'll be able to get a discount?
Yeah, no, but you make the decision. It's, I think it's gonna be a small amount of money. It doesn't have to come back to the board.
Yeah.
Dave, what do you agree with that?
I think that's fine.
Decision is your hand.
Okay.
Okay, I'll leave everything in the file if you finish, and I'll for tomorrow then.
Yeah.
Let Pam know that we've decided to do that, but it's not gonna affect her at all.
Yeah, we've already discussed it. She's okay with it.
Okay. All right, going down through the agenda. I'd like to discuss emergency number tw- twenty-five regarding fees and interest on late payments and property taxes.
I asked it to be put on the agenda.
Yeah, just to, um, not to circumvent this long discussion, but we are still waiting for a little bit of paperwork back, so I guess we'll start the discussion tonight, but I don't expect to act on it, only because we're waiting for some information to come back.
Well, the thing is, um, I think, um, if we're going to pay for late payments, we have a mechanism in place already, where someone can, uh, apply to the hardship to the, to the board of tax assessors. They can already apply. And if they're in hardship with, albeit unemployed, out of lack of income, or, you know, whatever the hardship is, I think we should just embrace the current mechanism. There are some questions that still need to be asked of whether, you know, timeframe and all that kind of stuff, but I think that we just, I would, it's our, I would make a recommendation from the board to the tax assessor, that, uh, they should at least consider the, uh, the current prices in the decision process, and would make a decision whether it's a hardship or not. And, uh, I would support, I, I support their decision, because it's done independently, as I recall, by a non-town entity.
True.
The, the part I have trouble with in the order, there are several areas where there's not a full description of what might happen if they did this or that, and, uh, they're trying to get answers back from some of those questions, and I think without the answers...
I'd say we defer that.
Yeah.
Is our next, uh, Bill, can, next Phil, I'm, Bob?
What's that?
You okay to defer that?
Yeah, I, I am, uh, you know what? And the other thing is I don't want to pull a rug out from under that, uh, committee that does that, the assessors, have that purview to make that decision.
Yeah.
And to try to take that away from them, uh, you know?
It's, Bob, it's currently, uh, it's, I have a fund of a million. No, no member, no resident in town makes the decision. It's, it's actually outsourced to an independent agency. And then the agency looks at the rules, which they're negotiating now, makes a decision, approve, disapprove. And they're gonna, they're, they're looking at those rules right now, and that's why there was many questions. But it's not done by any resident in town or any committee member. It's done by an agency external to the town. Am I correct?
Correct, yeah.
Were you aware of that?
No, I wasn't aware of that. I thought it was the board.
No, the board. They, the boards get, gets the recommendation from the committee, which makes a recommendation. Which, kind of like, what, what town minister further explained to me, years ago, we used to be considered almost like, uh, you come in, "Well, I know Joe, well, he's got a hardship," "but I don't like him this week." And so it makes, takes the personality away from residents helping residents or residents not helping residents. It makes it, "You've got a hardship, show me the facts, meets, meets the requirements, you're approved or disapproved." That's done independently of any town president. You know, they do that. How many years, though?
Um, at least since I've been here for sixteen years. So they've taken the authority away from the board, and so hired it through an assessing firm who is qualified and understands and knows the rules, and he makes a recommendation to the board. And they review that recommendation, and they can either say a or nay, but it's done, um, you know, very strictly through the...
But that comes back to the board of assessors, correct?
Correct, that's the one.
That's my point. Because in the end, they, they are making the decision, because it's only a recommendation.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the thing is, what happens, what has happened, I think Dave is spot on, uh, with the, uh, the state's trying to figure out what's considered a hardship or not, so those questions have been answered. So I agree with you, Dave. Let's just defer on that.
Okay, so we'll put that off, uh, for decision later on, when we're gonna actually support it or not, uh, after we get the information.
That's fine.
Okay, now we can go on to the, uh, signing of public paperwork for the energy committee and the town hall registration. Mike, I only have one here for the, um, Asha, Bob, do this one. Bob, you want to do the one for the energy committee?
The, let's see, the energy committee is, yeah, the only one, right?
Just that one, yeah. No, I'm listing the ones for the, uh, town hall registration.
Restoration.
Okay, yeah. Bring a motion to appoint Dave Albafield to the energy committee for a term ending March twenty twenty-three.
A second.
A second, man. Motion's been made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, demands. Maybe I'll send that, send that back. Mike, here's your stack. Next, that's from Town Hall Restoration Committee, of which there are one, two, three, four, five, six members.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mary Sue Breezy, Donald Larson, Indian Larson, Clement Madden, Kurt McDermott, Margaret Watkins, to the vacancy in the Dunbar, Dunbar and Town Hall Restoration Committee, with a term ending March twenty twenty-one. Mike, can just look at their expiration dates on each one.
I'll use them.
Yes.
Give me a second there.
Okay, motion's been made, the second all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, demands.
You get this, you get all of it.
That's the meeting minutes, right?
I can't spell all of them.
Okay, well, Bob's signing us. Um, I'm gonna go back to public comment real quick, just because, uh, Town mailbox has a few items in there. I'm not sure. Woody, did you have anything for public comment tonight?
Well, he does have an email in that list of, um, mailbox items that's dated to his department, and then he's got more kind of stuff on it.
Okay, so he's in the town business. All right, I'll move gears to the top then. I love that. I'll get that up in a little bit, while I have to finish it as well. Give a good shot, Bob.
Dave, I can get your black case if you want, please.
No, I stopped reading all home, man. All right. I'm gonna bring Woody's right to the top here. It's in the emails pretty much, just for you, as a defamation.
Okay.
Just to be the heads up. Here it is. Okay, so we have, uh, Woody Patrick following here from the transfer station, giving a sub-date, roadside cleanup's going good. Have collected a hundred and eleven bags, two TVs, five tires, and covered roughly half the town. Lost revenue so far for the construction and debris dumpsters eighteen twenty-nine. Thanks for keeping that tally up for us. Social distancing, it looks like it's becoming a little bit of an issue. People coming in, so... Social distancing, it looks like it's becoming a little bit of an issue. People coming in several times a day that we are open to the virus. People are coming in as crazy, want you to be aware. So, um, speaking to that quickly, Woody, do you think it would be better to have a single lane going to the van dumpster instead of two, or are people being courteous to each other?
It's a fifty-fifty split. You have some people that are being, you know, taking their responsibility and.
Yeah.
Then you have other people who are just already fed up with, excuse me, already fed up with having two lanes there. The problem with shutting that other lane down is if, we actually started on Saturday, a lot of people, we tried to get them to cover that second lane, but they don't want to. And that's fine. They have a big choice. Makes that, the line go all the way around and head back closer side, which isn't a problem. But if you close that other lane, you have people that are coming in, just with brush, they can't get help. And so now they're stuck there waiting for this line to go away for them to get help. You could say send them down the back row, but that's not a good idea because someone comes in, throws something in the metal container, misses, and they have to be going by, goes over against their car on the other side. That's a bad idea too. So it, it's kinda really crucial to keep that line open. May I totally understand? If people don't wanna, you know, utilize that line, but we need to have an access point.
I used the second lane this week, and I think there was two cars, there were like four cars, and waiting for the single lane. The, the second lane was opened up. I grew up the second lane. I never got more than six foot closer to anybody. I just took my time and dumped my trash, and I think it worked, I worked fine.
We've gone a few complaints here and there, but for the most part, it seems to be okay.
Bob, do you have any, uh, you know, to say about opening up the second lane or leaving it open?
I think you ought to leave it open.
Okay.
I, of course, I'm always there when you're not busy. But I mean, I do know that when you get busy, people wanna get by there. Some, and some of them don't have anything but that little bit of stuff in it with the brush.
Yeah, well, they have, just gum, well, they have just straggles. They can't get by if that second lane's blocked up. Now they're gonna wait your line.
We'll leave, we'll leave it the way it is for now, and I guess just keep us in, in, in the loop. And if somebody gets too blurged, don't be afraid to call the police down there, because you've got your margin orders from us, and just stay here and do what I'm told to do. Um, and you know, we have to, the, the people that have complained have, have gone up and approached Woody, stopped the traffic. They've made the situation worse by not just continuing on. And unfortunately, you're gonna get some of that. So I guess we'll keep it as you've been running it for now.
And like I said, I mean, we, we've definitely seen the increase in people coming in. You know, we have more people at home, I get it, but it kinda includes a whole social distancing off, but, you know, when you're, I mean, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, in the last week has been something like we haven't seen in years. I mean, it's just, it is during the day, during the day, and it pretty much dies right off about seven o'clock to eight o'clock, you know, two stragglers on Wednesday night, but from noon to seven, it's, it's crazy. Tuesdays are crazy.
Okay, so, um, getting back to your list of things here, you put the new sweepper in operation, and it's working very well?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, what about recycling information you said you had?
So yesterday, we already had a, um, a webinar with a doctor, Ben, I don't wanna screw his name up, Loquen, L O C W I N. He was our key speaker. And it pretty much, your topic was about the COVID- nineteen, and how, how many municipalities can deal with it as far as the recycling, and then I messed up here, which is trash. And basically, he hit on, um, mostly social distancing and protective equipment. And he also touched on a little bit of what OSHA said, which is, OSHA's is to keep doing what you were doing previous to the virus. I was, but using, and actually putting it off their paper, if you guys wanna see.
Using the PPE.
Using their PPE. So, and what he pretty much recommended was face masks. This is dealing with the recycle part of it, or interacting with the public part of it. Uh, face masks, um, goggles, potential face shields as another layer, but he suggested goggles wise, either a sealable goggles or a sealable, um, safety glasses actually sealed to your face. Um, and then your cop-proof gloves, which we use anyways. Uh, but also going one step further and putting, uh, a nitro glove underneath your cop-proof glove. So when you take that glove, your exterior glove off, you have another glove underneath, take those off, and then you wash. And that was kinda one of his big key points was wash, wash, wash.
Yeah.
You know, your own personal hygiene, keeping your hands clean, and, and actually in the space part of it, he, six feet is a guideline, but they actually recommend ten. He said that's because of the way the droplets come out. Um, and I'm not a doctor, sorry to understand this whole droplet part, but I have a gist of it, that some of the dog droplets have a tendency to go further, depending on how they're projected out, and so ten feet was a definite.
Clearance.
A good clearance to be. So as far as the recycling part of it, uh, a couple of questions were asked. You know, how long does it stay on material? And he pretty much said paper and cardboard, twenty-four hours. Your plastics and your steels, he said it could be up to three days. However, uh, the other side of the coin is some of that he brought up was, some of you would actually have to sneeze on the object and bring it in, and then actually be able to touch it, and then touch your face to actually have you get the virus.
Right.
Uh, so there is, there's still a definite possibility of getting it. Uh, but he also said it's a low risk of getting it from a surface. You stand a much better chance of getting it person to person, was what he, um, what he spoke of.
I have called Lena already this week, and we talked at the end of last week about getting the protective face masks to wear with your mask already. I'm hoping, yeah, the shields with the, with the, um, face mask, and you already have the gloves down pat.
Right, we have the gloves. The other thing, um, I started looking today for nitrals. The other thing, um, I have masks.
Nitro is, uh.
Yeah, basically, your, yeah, your, um, normally test gloves, medical gloves. I had to size the guys, some, you know, we didn't wanna buy forty bucks and have none of them fit, so I kinda had to size them up to get the right sizes, which everybody was in today, so we did that. The goggles part, I was looking that up today. You can probably get those ordered. The other thing, um, he spoke about was the cloth mask. You know, you've seen people making them. My, my mother-in-law, I actually donated a bunch of, a bunch out for us, uh, after transfer. He said with those, the best thing is you wear it one day and then hand wash it. And then, you know, he said, or if you don't wanna hand wash it, he said, you can get away with flipping it over and using the other side, but he recommends hand washing it. Because the length of time that the virus actually can stay alive on that, on that product.
He think you should machine wash it?
Well, you can machine wash it, but, you know, you obviously do laundry every day, so he rec, you know, he said you can hand wash it, and it's not a problem hand wash it and dry it. And that would be, obviously, gonna be the employees' responsibility. I'm not, everybody's laundry is.
So should go to open up, probably the goal would be open up recycling soon?
I would like to.
We're gonna talk about that on the thirtieth, which it's my hope that we can try that recycling center again at that point.
Why don't, so he should get the green light, and at least that's not accumulating the PPE.
I think he's already got it.
I signed a little bit, um, so I guess kinda.
The goggles are a pain they're in because they fog up. The face mask would be so much better.
He recommended, um, you know, both.
Both.
As this as a secondary precaution.
Okay.
We did recommend him to seal around, around the eyes. Um, yeah, you know, if you look at it.
So if you can find, I guess, go ahead and get them.
Or safety glasses.
Yeah.
They might be a little bit better, but they have to seal around, is what he, and I actually seen some of them online.
If, if, yeah, I.
Where you can, uh, you know, seal up. And then you could use, um, the mask over the top of it.
The shield.
The shield over the top of it. The other thing that we need to figure out, um, be, and this is something we're seeing now, is people are holding stuff, but they're running out of time. They're running out of room. And they're also holding things that we know we charge for, tires, mattresses, uh, refrigerators, ACs, you know, um, electronics.
I think, I think on the thirtieth, we're gonna address all that.
Okay, I was kinda, I thought from my last meeting, we were gonna talk about, you know, moving forward, then I went.
No, we moved it all the way to the thirtieth from the last meeting, so. We wanted to give it that amount of days, and then at that point, we're gonna address it and go through all of your things that we originally changed.
And, 'cause that was the other thing, well, if I mentioned, you talked about money. Money handling was another one. And he said up to ca, uh, on cash, this stays up to about a day. However, uh, credit cards can be two to three days. So if, for some reason, you, you had a credit card, you took credit cards, whatever. He said, not every town does this, what they brought up, but for the towns that do, if you had it on your card, and you went someplace, somebody touched it, had it, whatever, and they brought it to you, you have a potential app, because it can stay only for two, three days on a credit card.
So we don't take credit cards?
So another option would be if you, you know, we get to this point, we can always, uh, the temporary, just accept checks only. And ideally cash, except checks only, and have one person pretty much, and we can set the little shed up so that one person handling the cash through the slide window like at a bank, right there.
Just like, at Lowe's, you gotta.
Yeah, right there. You have a shield, you do it one person, taking care of every, every room.
Okay, moving on to the last item you have on here, I think, is, uh, you're having some feedback from some employee not wanting to work.
Yeah, it's, uh, the motivation isn't there.
Why is that?
I can't tell you. I know some are frustrated with keep going out and I have to do trash, but, um, I only have so many people that have a license, so some same people have to go up. It's just, I just wanted to bring it to your attention that this is something that's kinda spurring up, so we might have to.
You know, we're only talking a short period of time left to finish these roads up.
Yeah, probably.
I could've told you, the people that have seen the clean roads, it's like day and night. People really appreciate it, and I think that, you know, after this, like I alluded to earlier, we may even start doing this as part of the normal spring transfer station cleanup.
I think, I think is, I passed some compliments that were made last week to some of your crew, and, uh, they, at least the gentleman I talked to really appreciated the fact that he was being acknowledged for, uh, residents were appreciative.
Yeah, I think that some of it's coming from, you know, everybody's frustrated.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's some of it. I just want you to be aware of some of the little things that are starting to boil up there. But if we can, you know, I might need your help and town minister's help to kinda smooth this out to get them.
Let us know if there's a specific employee you need us to speak with, let us know.
But that's what I kinda wanted to bring to you, that's, maybe this is a potential that we need to, you know, maybe nip it down before it gets too far away.
Go ahead, Leo.
Well, if you're gonna start recycling, so maybe it's a possibility to start recycling, so then you don't have to go clean the roads after, you'll be needing them there, won't you?
Well, it's, one of the ideas that have kinda been tossed around is to kinda remove us from it a little bit, especially while this virus is, um, still going on. Is to keep it where, we might let, like, I know some towns I talked, talked to, there are four or five cars that come in, in the bins. For us, their building's already built that way, and we can adapt. You will come in and put your material in the bins, and then will let four or five more cars. So you still can run it at limited staff.
They, you would have, would they have to separate their own stuff before they get?
They would have to separate their stuff. We'll have the bins there.
Right.
You put your stuff in it, um, you know, and if we get it.
The only I, I can foresee is, I know that you're gonna give the overall on those card, with those first couple of weeks, but that's to be expected.
And the thing with cardboard, uh, we looked it on, and if we could get it, you know, we have to get it obviously located with the board, and, um, is to open a section of the building. Like, we have an area where we can actually board it off with some plywood that we have already, just throw it down that corner.
Open doorway.
It's in a corner, just throw it in there, and, you know, let it sit. So what if it sits there for a few days, then we can ban it. When we're, you know, we have time, kind of, to get, but just throw it in there, be done with all the other stuff in the boxes.
Would that be easier with the public, could just dump it right in there?
Yeah.
You know, I, I said, when I go to the recycling center, my stuff's always up there.
Well, like, like that, in the past, I've seen people bring in with, like, they have cans, bottles, and plastics all in, and they just dump them in, and the old guys sort it.
Yeah, but it's much easier to do it the way I do it.
Well, I, I think it's a, I think it's a good thing that we just educate the public. If you wanna drop your stuff, it's to be sorted.
Yeah, I think the town, they have one bay that says plastic, the next bay that says glass, the next one says aluminum cans. It's clearly marked, so the people eventually will say, oh, geez, why are we separating?
Woody, why don't you, over the next couple of weeks, get some signage ready to implement that, and kind of one, one window for each of them, and then do the cardboard in the bulk area there. Maybe in that doorway that should roll up, and you guys can move it out of there. Be as you need to.
The thing is, I think it'd be worthwhile to put on hot topics. The thing is, you need to separate, if you wanna put your recyclables in, they need to separate it now. Because too many people just have a bag of, and just dump it in front of your employees.
Right.
I don't want you.
Well, I think we'll put it on there after the thirtieth, so you know.
Af, no, absolutely.
You wanna be careful.
You know, pretty much, um, we, we have bins, and they will, they will overload in the course of, uh, I guess, if anything's the time, but they're rollable bins. Dump them, then we can actually hook them on the machine and dump them if we had to.
Um, but I don't want, you know, you're gonna get some, yeah, obstinate residents who don't wanna sort it. No, dump, try dumping all the plastics in the glass, and then you guys have to sort it. That's not right.
Anything else you have, Woody, that you wanna review before we move on to the other subjects?
No, I should be fine.
I appreciate you coming in, giving us this letter, um, all of the others, so I can read and decide.
I will make just one comment, though. On that roadside cleanup, um, I think it's a good idea. Do we continue it? We're gonna, you know, talking with the guys, there's a few things that, this is the first time we ever done it.
Yeah.
Uh, but there's a few things we're gonna have to adjust.
Yeah.
Uh, like how we're actually doing it. There's ways that you can do it a little faster, um, but it's all the time, you know, if it's up anymore, uh, look at what we're doing next year, and we can plan, of course, in the summer, winter, for the fall, and the year.
I did have one resident who basically, essentially said, I saw him just standing around doing nothing. I said, you're probably taking a break.
There's actually, uh.
You're gonna have that.
Yeah, the thing is, that's just life. I said, they're out there doing it. The fact they're picking up as much track, the evidence is in the, in what you reported.
Yeah, 'cause they, basically what happens, just tell you real quick how we get those numbers, um, I, the boxes are free, the bags are free. There's a hundred and fifty in a box. Every blue bag that comes in, they throw in the pickup, and we count them when they come off the truck.
Accessible.
Going.
Yeah.
Anything else is counted, stacked, put away, whatever.
I, I think, in my opinion, your crew's doing, you, you, great job.
I don't know what to go ask there one day this week. I think it was Tuesday, and we went to grassing to buy Blackbrook load on the way back. There were little bags all along. And she said, they will be all the way up. I said, I love it.
It actually, there's a few roads they had to do twice. Um, rather than only get, they got missed the first time, but they actually doubled up. Blackbrook, Little Lane, Kibble Pond, there's a, uh, a little, uh, barn area just beyond the last house on the hot dog. Um, I checked through the town map to make sure it was town property, and they actually got like, they had a half a pickup load of wood and debris and stuff out of there, so that was having to carry out.
Okay. Well, I think that. They're doing a great job. I'm, I'm really happy with them.
They should start probably going along next week.
You think, you think in two weeks should be finished, the town, maybe?
It's gonna be closed.
If that way, it'd be almost perfect to, to transition right into the recycling again.
It would be closed.
Should we put a sign up saying recycling coming again soon or something? Just to let them know that.
I'd say it could.
I'm just thinking, if people are getting frustrated, what do you do?
We have to make a decision tonight if we're gonna do that, open it up on the thirtieth.
Well, I'd say we could just wait the next, I think, the thing is, we can, we transitioned out of it, we can transition back into it.
Yeah, 'cause I think if we put the sign up, you guys might get inundated to it, and I think if we make the decision on the thirtieth, and then, uh.
Allow people to transition.
What if we make the decision, what if you do that, and then all of a sudden you really can't, 'cause things can work.
Right.
Yeah.
Be like, who are you on this stuff, and then they're gonna get pissed.
Let's wait till the thirty.
Well, how, how much, what's the sign up now, if you start marking like the glass, the plastic?
Well, it already says it's closed, so if he just makes them up so he can hang them.
Yeah.
With some twist screws or the bubble.
Well, I have to admit, though, the thing is, uh, the guys, but if you have glass, you can dump glass right there to put the trash, you can do that.
He loved on glass, steel, and, you know.
Okay, we're usually doing the glass and, and, and steel cans, aluminum cans for now, right, and the steel dumpster.
Right there.
They're doing something, and more and more people are doing it, so.
I did speak with Jane in fence today, and he's gonna come by and adjust your fences.
Okay.
Even if he's not, if you're not open, he's gonna go under the gate, walk under it, adjust them for you.
Yeah, 'cause one, uh, one section is really starting to peel and paint now.
Yeah.
So, can I just make one more? So, can I just make one more simple female comment? If I see a sign that's starting to tell me that. I'm gonna have to put my plastics here, my paper here, and my tin here, I will, in the next two weeks, make sure that what I'm collecting and saving, I'm gonna start to sort.
Maybe something like coming soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be all right.
I don't feel one of them is saying coming soon yet.
Doesn't get me.
That's real spot on, people don't bring any, since coming soon.
By putting the, the, where they want the item going, people will.
Hey, Kim, but right now, there's a big thing since closing, you drive right by it, you don't.
I, I, I'd say we, we'll transition, I think thirtieth will make a decision, I agree with Dave, thirtieth, and then we can transition into it, doesn't have to be like night and day, turn the light bulb off. I think a slow transition is fine, 'cause you have, some people don't wanna do anything, they're not continuing to just dump the trash everywhere.
So let me ask you this question, would it be safe to say that we just pull something out there that says. Recycling will be ter- determined on April thirtieth, its future or something, as a matter of fact. Or do you wanna just?
What are you being on?
Oh, I, I took my license on the Dunbar community page, a lot of people visit that. Can you just put a little blurb out there and just say, hey, a decision's gonna be, because we're getting asked, people wanna know, they're really frustrated with throwing it away.
But they should realize the situation. And not just that, I don't want much people coming to this meeting crying about it.
We won't, we won't put that down, yeah.
Okay. I think just, it'll come, it's gonna be surprising, it'll be.
Well, what's, what's your thoughts, Bob?
Well, you, you know, the governor just said that school's done for this year, other than the remote training, so you know they're not going to school. So you know, it's not getting, it's not a drop dead date.
Right.
So it isn't gonna hurt to wait two weeks and make a decision then, 'cause it, depending on which way this goes. Either you're gonna continue to not recycle, or you are gonna be able to start recycling, but we'll be a little closer to having a, to making a decision, you know?
Just so you know, I announced it earlier before you were here, we have no new cases in town, and the cases that were in town are past their incubation periods in there. We have zero cases posted right after the town of Dunbar. Not gone yet, so.
It just, just to throw this out there, I also am holding my recycling, just 'cause I work there, I do not take them in there, I don't mind around it, so. I just don't want everybody thinking I treat myself very carefully, I don't.
All right, going on to the rest of the mailbox items, thank you, Woody. Okay, uh, the next we have a review of our quarterly expenses and revenues. No new taxable property assessments for twenty nine came in at three million forty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Which equates to just under eighty-three thousand in added revenues. That's good news for us.
I was supposed to read that out, but I gave you my G T.
Oh, you were gonna read it, Lee?
That's okay, you did a good job.
All right, sorry to take your thunder. Anything else on here you're gonna read before? So, um, she's got the revenues, um, outside on the top here, if you guys could look at those next week, we'll leave it in the basket, and the expenses. Is that okay, Lee, if they look at them during the week?
Absolutely, yep, yep. It's just good information for you guys to be aware of, we're already past the third, the true. Third, third quarter end of week expenses, but, because the weeks keep moving on, but that's, uh, just showing what we have at our third, end of the third quarter.
First quarter.
First quarter.
I was gonna say, moving too fast.
Third week, first quarter. Okay, um. We also got a, um, notice in here from Owen Harrington, um, from the school about, um. Possible damage to some ash trees in the front, um, emerald ash boards, wondering if the town would be willing to remove them. Lee and I concerned that they're dead and dying will become further liabilities. I noticed during our voting that those. Ash trees right along the gymnasium, the mark was going off all, I think maybe Leo would, I might have talked about it, and, uh, it looks like they're gonna need to come down. My only thing is, um, does this come out of the school board budget, or does it come out of town's?
Would you take candy outside or would you take care of the inside?
I would say that.
It's a Jeff's trick, I imagine.
Yeah. I think Poppy definitely did it, so, uh, with your action, then I'll.
I would say that we have consensus to take them and have the town, uh, take them down. If we need to get bids, Lee, we'll just present the bids to us and we'll make a decision on them. And thanks for seeing, seeing Jeff on that. Okay. The next thing, we have an email from the Wellford director, uh, a donation from NHS group. At Bow High School was recommended, the donation we made out to the local food church pantry, and the donation was for five hundred dollars, that's the donation I spoke about earlier.
It was about the same folks having the little sale at the, uh, at the voting day.
Yeah, and, uh, I thought that was very helpful for, uh, you know, surrounding community to help out with that food pantry and, um.
So ju- just on the board now, the pantry is not strictly just food, they have acceptable there, so if someone comes in and says, I need gas money, or I need, you know. To go to the doctors and I don't have my O B or something like that, the food pantry has the authority to do that without going through the hoops that we do for.
And I, and I found out some other information today, finally I have a little more talk with Patty Scher, and they have a, a running tally, and they try and keep it each, each. Group or person to three fifty per year off that food pantry, uh, when they help out, but they get a lot of different, uh, a lot of different things they help people with, um.
So that's, check was transferred to the, uh, food pantry?
It looks like Jane transferred it, so that was great news there. Okay. And then we've got a letter here addressed to the board of selectmen about a timber sale, and that's the wood over by Bob's house. From the Hoppington Everett Flood Control Area in Dunbar and Waiter, so. We have the volumes of pine and hardwood and hemlock and red oats that they took out of there.
So that form there is basically, um, what the Army Corps approves and acknowledges to the awarded bidder of the. These Army Corps land, managed land, and with that information, they are allowed to flag and cut that number of board feet. Um, for this calendar year, and the revenue from that comes to the town. Or tax revenue, I'd say.
Okay. Uh, the next one we have here is a letter from the chief of police showing that he, uh, met his ongoing fitness test. Um, on April first, twenty twenty, indicating that he passed, um, so appreciate that, and, uh. Send out our congratulations to the chief. And we've all signed that value, but we signed that too.
I signed it already.
Yeah. Uh, we have a letter here that we kind of have gotten early on after our last meeting, we all got email on this. Um, there was a call in from a resident over in Flintlock Farms that thought that Flintlock was a private road, not a town road. And they saw a car parked in a precarious position on the curve, and, uh. They took pictures of the car and gave it to the police department, and then they talked with Lee, like, through the town, or actually Joe Marie.
Oh, did they?
Yep, they came and talked with Joe Marie, and, uh, she got the part of paper, maybe it was Donna, well, somebody gave it to the town.
Donna.
No, it was Joe Marie, that was.
Joe Marie?
And, um, showing that it was a town road, and that they showed them the deeds and how the property got transferred, they gave that information to the police department, the police department gave to the landowner. And so I think it, uh, had everybody.
That's the information I gave to Dan, from the software.
Yeah. So anyway, um, I think that they're, they're all set, there are some safer areas to park there, people like to walk there, 'cause it's a circle, it's black, so, um, that went out. Email from Woody, we just took care of, and, uh, the last thing I have on this town business, we had a long, um, standing town residence. That, uh, Al Val or Alphonse Val, um, he was eighty-nine, they moved to Meredith after they sold the house here on the corner. Um, uh, passed away this last week, so on April eighth. So I just wanted to announce that, and that's in the folder as well. So, that's it for town business. Now I'm gonna open it up one more time to the public and then bring it back to the folder. Any public comment, Leo?
One, uh, a couple of things, one is, um, when we, you know, imagine, uh, the town's gonna be doing things differently after this. Kind of daymaker's turn, as I've been saying it from the beginning, the whole world's gonna be doing things differently.
Right.
The restaurants are gonna be different, the, uh, off-site schooling, all of them, everything's gonna be changing, you know, so.
Yeah.
A lot of it's not bad stuff, you know?
No, no.
Distancing and some face masks here and there.
You got, you know, ways of doing things, you know? So, um, it's not gonna be bad, but, um, but you'll see, there's gonna be a lot of changes, I think, after this is done. But, um, the other thing is, I know we're gonna be busy now with this new project upstairs at the library, town hall, but, um. Did we ever hear anything about that, uh, dance thing?
I don't think we.
We didn't send them on another email. We did award or, and accepted them.
We did, uh, we gave, we gave the.
And we've encumbered that money.
And encumbered the money to the person that originally helped with that.
Right.
And, uh, I think they're in between, they're, they're trying to wrap up a few projects, I think is what's happening, so.
That is Goslin, right?
Not, on the base, it was, uh, Valken Construction.
Oh, Valk.
Yeah.
Goslin was the roof on the.
I'm gonna follow that, see if I can.
Okay.
But now you're right, Leo, that's, so the weather's here with us now, we should try and get that.
Because, I mean, no, we won't be using it for a while, okay? But when it comes time to be nice, it's already.
Lee, if you send me a quick note to that, um, I'll send you his wife's email, and she's kind of making the agenda.
She's actually, um, communicated to me, that's how I got, uh, confirmed, that she knew that.
All right, the pu- the public, there's, I've seen people out there, you said, speaking on a monthly basis, yeah.
Oh, no, I understand that, yeah, yeah. Um, what I mean is, is if it's going to move, it might not, you know, but he has a different plan, you know, so.
Um, one question I have for Lee is, Dean, John Trotter had a few people he wanted to appoint to his board, we didn't see those appointed.
You actually made them last week, so the letter came to me, um, two days ago from a building friend of mine, it was dated the seventh.
Oh, we made them already.
Um, which was afternoon second, so I got a little confused, but then when I read your minutes, they are, we want some new data, so I already booked them, so you're all set then.
I asked a question, I wanna make sure that we get their, uh.
Yeah.
Chairman approvals or recommendations.
Woody, you have anything else?
Yes, one quick thing, so do you want the, uh, my, the staff have the transfer masks up now, do you, what's your thought on that? Well, we haven't been wearing a mask, we've kind of been keeping our distance, but we have masks.
I think keep your distance, but offer to them, if they'd like to wear them and you have them.
Yeah.
Go ahead and let them use them. All right? I think I, I heard some things about, uh, one of your employees wanted to have some more protection. If they feel that they wanna wear the mask and or goggles, if you get the goggles in, and they wanna start now, I have no problem with them starting right.
As we, you know, I let them know that we do have, we do have, uh, original masks, but now we have these, uh, reusable masks, so. All right, Saturday, I'll punch these in.
Yeah, and if they want to, and let them know that you got protective eyewear being ordered in, and we are gonna follow those procedures when we start opening that up, you can start letting them know that.
Okay.
Lee?
I guess I can bring it up, um, at one point, well, just recently in all of these emergency orders, there's been a lot of things that have been implemented for, um. Health care workers getting extra stipend and whatnot, and I know at one point, we, the board had talked about, um, looking at, uh, possibly a stipend for. The transfer station, um, employees to try to incentivize them to stick around, and I don't know if you've had any.
I haven't had any thought of that, but, um, I'll tell you what, why don't we as a board, why don't we look at that over these next two weeks, think about ourselves, and on the thirtieth, we'll make. That decision as well, and if you want, we can make it retroactive back to this weekend, if you guys decide to do that, but. At least when we open back up the counter at the transfer station, if we come up with a, a, a multi thing. You know, it may not be huge, but it might be something just to help keep them on board, and, and remind them, part of us having this roadside pickup is so that we keep their hours steady. And, uh, don't have them, you know, losing their work time that they're used to.
I think, like I said, I think the biggest thing is just the overall frustration.
Right.
Uh, some of it's gone within the extreme with their frustrations, and.
Yeah.
So I guess, like I said, so I just wanna make you aware of that, but I think it's just an overall frustration, um.
I think everyone's feeling that.
You know, it's.
All right, I'm gonna, uh, close that and I'll bring it back to the board, what do you have, Mike?
Uh, just, uh, Chief, uh, Chief Police, established council, sent an email to your password to the E O C of COVID newsfeed, and he also established.
I already sent it out, yeah.
So, and he said, essentially from him, it's been a quiet week, uh, everything's been steady, and, uh. We just talked about, uh, one of our party officers, Leanne Moore, but she has a full-time job, she can't commit as much to this department, and we acknowledge that. And so he's, uh, he's offered, uh, he's got some hours, he's offered it to, uh, Joe Milliotto, as for example, like to have, come in, put some extra hours in to help cover. Okay, your editing's going well, if we throw in.
Okay, Bob?
Well, I got one thing, 'cause we were talking about an incentive for the transfer station, so it's gonna be something you can think about. And I talked to Lee about this once before, and that's giving them a traveling allowance, because then it's non-taxable. They don't have, you don't take Medicare out or anything, it's a lump sum that they get each month. Uh, make it, the ones that are working, the maximum hours, a hundred dollars, twenty-four to twenty-eight hours, seventy-five, and under twenty-four, fifty. And at least that's something, and that's not touching this way, touching that three percent they got, leaving that alone and giving them that, 'cause that's just. Cash money, and there's no accounting other than keeping track of the minor, the travel allowance that they're getting. In the construction industry, and Leo, you've taken advantage of that, we've had contractors, that that's what they've done to offset, to attract and get the people.
It's a travel allowance, but they're not traveling at all. Right?
Call it a travel allowance.
Right.
And, and that's how you give them the money, 'cause the IRS, IRS recognizes twenty-five dollars a day or less. That you don't have to pay taxes on.
I was thinking a one-time stipend, you're talking about doing this monthly?
I, I, I think we do it monthly, and it's a little bit extra, and they do have to travel there.
Definitely.
Last time we did this, it was like three months, but that was because it was, it was.
Right, but you know, I don't, I don't see, it's, don't, if you think about it, it's on each person, it doesn't come out to a whole lot of money.
I was thinking about doing it more COVID nineteen related, and then maybe we can, um, put it as part of our expenses, so then we may be able to recoup it. So that's what my thought was so far, if we do do something for our transfer, for station workers, and, uh, even the face-to-face workers.
Well, there's two issues I think are coming up, one is, um, we, we wanted to give a incentive, uh, a, a real cash incentive to our employees as a, as part of the regular pay package. What you're looking at is probably, and additional money for COVID separately from that, I think we can embrace both of them in two weeks, we should think about it. But I think both, uh, both options are something to consider.
We just gave our employees a three percent rate.
Right, but the thing is, uh, early on, uh.
And Woody had asked us to look at how much we paid, and we're still in that process, we haven't finished that, but we did do that. Uh, not too long ago, and we actually paid our employees that are at the transfer station.
But we're, rather than trying to figure all this out tonight, go home and think about.
Oh, I'm not trying to figure it out tonight, Bob.
No, I'm just saying, go home and think about it.
I'm just trying to say, Mike is, Mike is saying there's two different things, and.
Well, I, I think you should leave it on every month, only because we talked about it, and he talked about taking away the three percent and adding on to it. And I say, just leave it alone and give them that money, and you're not talking about a whole world of money, but that might hang on to a person there, because it is tax-free. He doesn't have to report on his income tax, we only have to report it as a line item here, so, I mean. And it's just something to go back and think about, if you think of something different, that we can embrace it, that's fine.
And then what's, it's just something to go back and think about, if you think, there's something different and we can embrace it, that's fine too.
I can run the reports and let you know what each employee is working average, so they can get a true idea of, you, you imagine what the hours were over there?
Yeah, you know, uh, you know, to.
Strangifies it, strangifies it based by number of hours.
Yeah.
But, but I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing, what you brought up was a COVID nineteen type.
No, no, I was thinking that it came, that you had spoken about earlier during the budget process. Um, and how we can consider rather increasing the pay rate, Bob came up with a, um.
Okay, so what you brought up was nothing to do with COVID nineteen.
No.
No, but what, what Dave's bringing up too, I think we have two, two different items, I think, I think they're both something to think about.
One thing. She brought up a stimulus package, a lot of, like, healthcare workers are getting, some of those are getting a stimulus package because they're working face-to-face.
They're getting a stipend.
A stipend.
Would be what he was.
Okay, so that's what I thought you were talking about, so if we're talking about something different, I want to get understand.
Two different things, right, you're right, two different things. Things, one thing about by doing it your way, just embrace what Bob's doing, but also embrace what you're doing. You can, you could give them another incentive in, in addition to a regular incentive for Dave, for what Bob's working presenting. But that way, in case we get reimbursement as a COVID expense, we could pencil it in that way.
So something you have to keep in mind too, if you, if you're looking at this as a hazard, um, then you need to include everybody that works there, including Woody.
Yeah. And I'm gonna go back to you, when you met, because you mentioned healthcare.
Yeah.
And I know all about it because nobody's seen that.
Yeah.
They're only giving it to the person that's working with the, either the patient or the resident. That has the ability to possibly get it or has that COVID nineteen.
Okay.
The administration in those facilities gets zero.
Oh, okay, so it's.
Just so you know.
Okay.
It's just the healthcare and they're dealing with the person that could have COVID nineteen.
I, I, so, I, I agree.
It's hands-on.
We go through the stack board and come back and, and then at the month and the next meeting.
Yeah, we're just gonna be careful we don't get too much on the agenda there, because we're talking about opening up all the different facilities there down there and what things we're gonna accept.
Transfer station discussion.
Because, because like you, she was saying, if you're talking about COVID, uh, you, you have to understand that that's overseen by someone that's gonna approve it. We're all presenting them or not, his ability not to.
So really, what she brought up had nothing to do with COVID, what you're talking about, it's just looking at.
It was what we were talking about earlier on that, uh, that, uh.
But if, if we did do COVID, I hate to say, we, if you open up for just transfer station, well, the, the police department has to deal with public. You have, everyone in this building has to deal with public.
So, for me, from right now, let's do the, the COVID conversations off the table unless it's brought up again.
Right.
So what you're talking about is board incentive for the transfer station.
That was the incentive for him to try to keep some people there, because it's.
So, I want to remind everybody that we tried that incentive as we hired people and then we took that away. Uh, what was it, a hundred and fifty dollars or?
I thought it was like.
It was, it was three hundred, but it wasn't over a thousand.
It was a three hundred bonus.
It was a sign language.
Six months, three hundred dollars.
And, and we took that away, okay, but, um, that's not going there. What I want to see, Lee, if we do this, is I'd like to see the surrounding towns, how they're paying, how our guys have paid that you've done for us before. You might even still have the paperwork.
Yeah, I think Woody's done some homework on it too.
I think, I can make some.
So if we could do, for the thirtieth, I'd like to do that again, only so, I want to know if we're paying them here and everybody else is paid here, if we're actually. The last time we looked at it, Woody, it was a while back, but they were actually paid pretty well compared to other towns our size. So I'd like to look at that again before I make any decision on that.
And they're actually paid more than what they show when you go to New Hampshire employment and you get that statistic. I, I gave you that earlier this year.
Okay, I, I think.
Remember, we were higher than what they had there. So, I mean, I, and I, I think we're still gonna say, stay consistently a little higher than the other towns. Because every time I've looked at something, we're still, for the size town that we are, we're above a lot of the, the, the communities.
What I like about Bob's proposal, he puts more money in the, in the hands of the employee and that's.
And it's not taxable, no, it's, it's one that's not taxable, so they still got their raise and this is something that.
There's one, there's one of two ways we can go about it, either doing that method that's not taxable, or we could make the amount of money enough to cover the taxes. So if you want to give somebody a hundred, you give a hundred and thirty dollars, it covers their taxes.
It's gonna cost you more.
It's gonna cost you more. I know it's gonna cost this tour, but it might not become an accounting liability at the end of the year.
Oh, you could say that's a line item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But initially would be a line item.
I know, but we do get audited, Lee.
No, no, well, we just, we have the food mileage for.
I know, but he's actually driving somewhere.
Correct.
They are too, they have to get to work.
I know, you're not referencing the amount of miles they're going to work, you're referencing the number of hours they're working. And that's where I think you're gonna find auditing glitch.
So, yeah, but they're going four days a week for that month, for the.
I know.
You know? It's.
Recommend we table it till the next week?
Is it a question that you run by your auditor or just, I say, hey, this is what we're thinking?
That's, that's, I think we might.
You know, they run by our, say, hey, this is what we're thinking, and that, that's.
Well, she's now with the auditor at the end of the year, is what she's thinking.
No, I, I want to tell you something, I've watched guys travel and work together and get their mileage money from the same contractor. Those three guys who drove, they drove together and they got three hundred dollars a week.
That only happens in meetings.
Please don't listen. No, I'll tell you, any, any other side, I'll tell you one of the lessons they do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Uh, you're all done with any ideas?
Yeah, I'm all set.
You good luck with that.
It's just, I wanted to give these guys something to try on.
I'm gonna give you something at the end too. Um, Lee, you were supposed to put this on the agenda for me. Uh, we talked about, instead of having that, um, paper that Linda has there, um, that polyurethane, we need to put up their own weighty. It looks a little hokey to me, I'm seeing plexiglass done properly at all these places we're going into. Lee and I had talked earlier this week about getting three pieces of plexiglass, having our contractor.
She's no interest in, and I don't believe Judy has, but I'll have to double check again.
But we're just gonna, no, not slide, we're just gonna leave it out eight inches, so when you're talking the, the.
Like the cashiers.
Yeah, just so you slide it underneath. I want at least do Linda's, because that looks really hokey. And I think we should do Judy's, because Judy is really concerned about it.
Alright.
And if they want to keep theirs open, if they're open with the social distancing, that's fine with that.
The comment that came up with Judy is that the airflow would be cut off completely. So during the summer months, you know, the air coming.
We're only talking about, uh, temporary periods.
Obviously, if we're in a mask.
But not just, yeah, we gotta leave it open. We gotta leave it open, okay?
Do you want to do something that, from what, you know, that kind of chain that's holding up the lights? And then just holes in the attic hanging and.
Well, we could do that, but I think if, I mean, that's a little pancreatic there, if we just screw it to that surface temporarily, or we pull it off and just fill it up.
I'll talk to the girls and see how they want me to install that.
You're not gonna get too many people at your window.
Not, no, yeah.
That's what I'm, you want to grab it.
You gotta get a, like a Lowe's or Margaret basket, we have the most similar.
Last, I, I would at least like to get plexiglass, if, if we have consensus.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have consensus?
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we're, we're, we're in the, uh, we don't even go into it, it's the way to do it, like, I mean, it's from.
Okay, like, like Lee said, you're not gonna see too many people at your window. And I'm sure that with the primary and with the election, with the Secretary of State saying they can do mail-in ballots.
Yeah.
I'm sure you're gonna get a lot of mail-in ballots.
Yeah. Um, well, they didn't say mail-in, what do they call those ballots? Absentee ballots.
No, they said, uh, the Secretary of State actually called it mail-in ballots.
He did?
Yes.
I thought they were against mail-in ballots, they had to be a full-blown absentee ballot.
What you do is, well, you, you, it's going through the mail back and forth, that's why you call it a mail-in ballot, that's what they are anyways, I don't doubt.
It is. Um, town hall steps. Since, um, you're under the concrete business your whole life, I was hoping to put that as kind of your section of that town hall building to work on. And maybe we'll get a demo price and then a reconstruction price with proper footings. So we can use next year, so we have the whole year to do it, but I'd like to make you the lead guy on it.
Okay.
Because you're, you're in that field and so.
Well, it's kind of wild, but it's still.
You remember it all.
Yeah.
But, um, I just thought if, if that section of the front stairs, if we pour everything to you and then you come back to us with what you have. We get the dollar amount for that. And what we're only concerned about is having that total dollar amount, so that if she does that grant next year, Margaret will have the proper information to go and write the grant up with. Right now, she doesn't have any idea of the dollar, but, you know, it could be seventy-five thousand dollars, it could be fifty, it could be twenty-five. And so, yeah, so if we can work on that, Bob, together, I know that you've got a lot of, uh.
And you know, a lot, some of the, some of the concrete companies will come out, do it that, uh, what we saw, they'll cut it up in the hour, in no time, you know? But you can get a bid and we can do that, we call a co- a company, get a couple of companies and call them and ask them to give us a bid.
I have a really good concrete company over towards the Jaffrey employee that has one, and I have a good demo company too, so. I'll get with you on that, but I'd like to put you as the lead guy and get that part of it done.
Yeah.
I think so.
You want to be head to?
No, you don't want to talk to Jeff. Uh, as you said, you know, you're gonna have to, uh, make sure you can, uh, shore up that cavity.
Yeah.
That's, that's the path to being.
Jeff, transferring.
Transfer, yeah.
You want to make sure that's shored up, that's the big deal.
Yeah.
After that, they could remove everything and form everything, like, like you said, Dave, for the footing, you don't know what you get for a footing here.
Right.
So you might want Jeff involved in a little bit of that.
Yeah.
And he said he was willing to work on it.
Your goal is to, to get the, uh, information she submitted for that screen.
Yeah, right, I mean, you know, a contract that can come in and give you a price and pull everything off, or just to think collapses after, you know?
Right. No, we'll, uh, we'll look at holding up those two.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be, uh, together, you know?
Yeah. So I figured, uh, if we work on that, Bob, we can.
Yeah, because, uh, you know, her grant might just be for the concrete work too, so that.
No, what her grant for is, and the reason she's applied for grants was building for. And the reason her grants have failed is because they've not been structural grants.
Right.
Life safety wasn't enough for the particular grant she was doing for, it had to be the building structure. But because those stairs tie into the wall with the stone system, that's part of the building structure, she thinks we can get a fairly good grant for this.
Yeah.
And then, so, we can make that part of our building maintenance next year.
Right.
If the grant processes or not. And we'll know the dollar amount at that point too, we'll put it in our budget. But I think if we, uh, Margaret wanted to try and do something this year, we were way behind on it.
Yeah, and I don't know if you might want to keep, uh, in mind, if, I don't want to talk to Donna about what the regulations would be for that without railings. Because they were railings before and that was the law, you had to have them.
Right.
And he said he did raise that.
Three, yeah, they added the line phone.
I know residentially it's thirty inches, but I don't know on that type of a building, so we'll have to check that.
Yeah, some places it's two, two steps.
Yeah.
There's two steps, you got that on rail.
Yeah. So, so we'll look at that too.
So you might want to know that part, you know, all of that part.
Yeah. So I figured if we do that, you know, we're gonna get the upstairs repaired, we'll get the numbers for next year for that, and then I'll work on the sprinkler system. And, uh.
I see.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah, can we sign what we're gonna do with the steel?
Um, I'd say we could, um, have Jeff take that and, uh, I think steel prices probably plummeted like everything else, but when it goes up, we can recycle it.
Can we redo that?
No, there's too many holes. They said they would refabricate if we could reuse another project, but there's so many questions, that's all I have.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I know more.
I have four.
Say again.